And that parking there, he said, I don't care how she got that car parked there because if she lived on that. It was flooded.
What I did, my work is right in the morning for me. I take my education thing, but my house at six o'clock, we'll be getting the hotel in ten. Because of the portion of the interstate that was flooded, so the Detroit was well, the interstate does, but it was I had that.
Well, you can go back some water, you can't here.
Yeah, Texas roads.
Yeah, we can have that issues. Matter of fact, no, we're not.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the Marion County Board of Education Monthly Business Meeting, August the nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five at five thirty-five P M. I will now call on Reverend Robert Woodbury for our invitation. Good evening.
I chair woman or let us pray. Father, we bless you tonight. We thank you for this opportunity. We thank you for this privilege to call upon your name on this side of heaven. We thank you tonight for this meeting, for these officials, those who are elected and appointed, those for God who serve this community. We pray for them tonight. We ask that your blessing be upon them as you have called them to be stewards of this great district, this great county in their capacity. Father, we pray for those who were not able to be here today for various issues and situations, whether it be health or whatever it might be, we lift them up tonight as well. We thank you for those who are being recognized and honored tonight. We thank you for those who are just in attendance. We just thank you for your goodness and grace. We ask that your spirit of unity be in this place of God and that you would move us into a place of perfect synergy for your kingdom. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Man, thank you, Reverend Woodbury. Next, we'll establish our quorum. Miss CCR, have the public and the media been aware of our meeting tonight? Good. We do have a quorum for board members. The next item on the agenda would be the consent items, the approval about agenda for eight, I'm sorry, August the nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five. What's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, I submit that we accept the agenda for August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
I got a proper motion. I heard both of y'all, but you kept it going. So I'm gonna say a proper motion for Ms. Patricia Atkinson. Reverend Brown, can I get the second from you?
Sure.
I'll take the second from Reverend Brown. Any discussion? With no discussion, we'll take it to all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The ayes carried, the approval of the agenda for tonight has been approved. And the next one would be the approval of minutes for our monthly meeting for July the fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. What's the pleasure of the board? Some move. Okay, proper motion by Ms. Ogerita White. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
So I'll take that second for Reverend Brown for the approval of the minutes for the monthly meeting of July the fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Any discussion? With no discussion, we'll take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The ayes carried and those have been approved as well. Okay, so I'm gonna do another welcome. Welcome everyone to our meeting tonight. This is the part that we all love. It's where we recognize our people, our students, everybody in this district. So we're gonna turn this part over to Dr. Pathé.
Madam Chair, members of the board, our community stakeholders and staff. Again, this is our favorite part of the board meeting where we acknowledge the performance and accomplishments of both staff and students. And tonight we have before you a summer graduate. But I do want to tell you that this summer graduate this year is a little different. In the past, most of our summer graduates did not complete their requirements to be able to march with their regular class. But this is an early graduate. This young man has completed his requirements early to be able to go ahead and move and transition to his next journey in life. So before we even call his name, let's go ahead and give him a hand. And at this time, Madam Chair, if you will join me and if you would, Dr. Bunch.
At this time, I'd like to call the principal to the front, Mr. Emerson, if you come to the front. This is indeed a great honor to have this student tonight. As you said, we have a student that decided to finish early and start his college career and move on with his collegiate life. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, I'd introduce you from Mullins High School, Mr. Christopher Curran.
Recognize the span, we'll wait, but recognize his book of graduates and call him. Good job.
And before we break, I would like to recognize our leadership team, the individuals that have been charged with leading our schools this year. Several of our board members were not able to make convocation. I did ask for our team of principals to come to the stadium for convocation, but I think it's very important that you all can put faces with names. I will say that I'm extremely excited about the energy that they have brought, but also just their focus on academics, that academic accountability. And I just want to commend this team, our new principals and returning principals for what I think has been an impressive start to the school year. Ask that you keep the momentum and continue to focus and be strategic about our academic efforts. So at this time, I would like for our new principals to please stand. And if you would, please go to the podium, starting with Ms. Jenkins, and just tell your location and anything else you wish to share.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Karen Jenkins. I'm the principal at the Academy of Early Learning, and I am so happy to be in this position this year. I have grown here in Marion County, and I'm excited for what the year is gonna bring.
Good evening. My name is Stacey McDonald, the new principal at Panetta Middle School. It's been a great experience so far. We look forward to moving the needle, continue to do great things there. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Brandon Hudson, the principal at Creek Bridge STEM Academy. And our motto this year is to educate, engage, educate, and empower.
Good evening. I'm Victoria McGilvery, the principal at MIS, Marion Elementary. We're very excited. We had a great start to our year. Our motto this year is never is not an option, and we're taking that down to everybody in our building and outsides. We're very excited.
And Ms. Matt, would you please stand? I do want to acknowledge that Ms. Matt, last year, even though she did not have the title, Ms. Matt acted in the role of principal for most of last year at Marion Elementary School and did a phenomenal job. So job well done. And thank you for the work that you will continue to do.
Awesome.
I'm Carol Hill, Director for Adult Education and is working to continue on good work that has begun. Your county-wide adult ed system is well-known across the state as being exemplary. And I've certainly found that Marion is is being supportive and the staff is great and the students have gotten started and we're excited about the year.
Awesome. We're glad to have.
Dr. Hill just recently received the Lifetime Achievement Award through our Administration Association as well for her work in secondary education throughout South Carolina. So thank you all, new principals. At this time, allow returning principals, please stand. Of course, we don't need to introduce yourselves, but if you want to say something, please feel free. Not for two minutes. Put the phone in. Quiet. Well, we again want to thank our returning principals for the job that they are doing as well and wishing all of our leaders just an amazing school again. So thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, at this time, we do ask that we still do our recess so that they can transition. Thank you.
Thank you. We will take a three-minute recess to allow anyone that does not want to stay for our business meeting to leave. And thank you for coming. Thank you. We will take a three-minute recess to allow anyone that does not want to stay for our business meeting to leave. And thank you for coming. We are returning back to our regular business meeting. We are going to turn this part into, to, over to our superintendent for her report, Dr. Candice Bethay.
Madam Chair, at this time, I'll ask Mrs. Angel Cooper to come forth with our finance report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members. Dr. Bethay?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The July numbers are in your board packet. The general fund revenues were one million, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six oh four. And expenses were one million, seven hundred and forty-four thousand, eight fifty-four. Medicaid revenue for July was two thousand, three twenty-four. And expenses were forty-eight thousand, four sixty-five. Most Medicaid revenue coming in right now was done back to prior year. Any questions?
Madam Chair. When we hand out your executive session folders, which we will hand out shortly, you do have a budget calendar where we have embedded two sessions with the board's finance committee so that we can do some groundwork and then come back and have a workshop before it goes to the bottom. And that will be the straight, we've already outlined in the statement.
Awesome. Any questions for Ms. Cooper? No questions? Thank you, Ms. Cooper.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, I will have Mr. Jason Jordan with our operations report. And then Dr. Bunch will then follow with brief information about our priorities plan.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members. It's been a busy summer. I want to touch over a few things with you all to keep you up to date. Mullins High Track, this week, we will have something back from Brownstone for GeoTech. They had to do four samples for it to make sure that the surface is able and ready to go before we put out the bid for redoing the Mullins High Track. Panetta Middle School and Johnakin Middle School locker rooms, all the construction is done. Painters will be in there this week, and then we will have those up and running. Synthetics, the crisis alert systems that all got implemented this summer, and it's up and running at every single one of our facilities. Our staff members have been designing badges for this. Mullins High School and Marion High School front partly, we're putting out a bid for repavement of it. And that will go out August the twenty-seventh, we'll be posting. Mullins High School cafeteria renovation, I guess you would like to call it, to make it more up-to-date and all that kind of stuff. We've gotten the quotes in. We're just finalizing everything with them and working with Harold Offs Plaque. They're on state contracts for doing that project. The bank detections, they're finalizing all the install on it, and in the next couple of weeks, it should be up and running. And then give you all a couple of updates. Partner Energy, they've been working with something to get all the audits that are acquired from the federal government since they're giving us millions of dollars. There's a lot of audits that have to be done for it, so they've been working really hard this summer to get all that in. By the end of this month is the plan to have all the audits in, and they will come back and present all the options and plans to us and decide what things we want to move forward on it. The electric buses, still, that's state department stuff as far as, but they did go in and demolish the old tennis courts at Marion High School where that will be the landing pad for eight of the buses there. We met this summer with Duke Energy and them and all that kind of stuff. So I think from my understanding, the next thing is Duke Energy coming to put transformers in for the charging stations for those. So it'll be four at the Mullins Bus Lot and then eight at the Marion Bus Lot. And the safety grant, just to keep you updated on a couple of other grants, you know, we received a million-dollar safety grant a couple of years ago. We're reapplying for some more this September. And then Dr. Bunch is gonna talk about stronger connections. One of our big targets for this safety grant will be intercom systems. We learned getting the synthetics in, it integrates with your intercoms, but a lot of our intercoms are well in age and new ones run through network servers and all this kind of stuff. And so we want to do an upgrade of that and get all our schools to have upgraded intercom systems. So that's one of the big things we're targeting with this, with these grant funds. I'll let Dr. Bunch talk about one of the last things in there we have is the consulting services, facilities assessment, RFQ that we put out. You want to talk about it now or?
Oh, so we'll be going into executive session or asking for executive session. This is contractual. And so we'll have a lot of things to talk about, so we'll talk about it in great detail during executive session.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Thank you, Dr. Bunch.
Madam Chair, we now have.
I have a question. What is the status of the alarm Mullins High? Is it working? Or is it on? Is it off? The fire alarm?
It's working. He has been coming this summer and now missed the job for. Anytime anybody of course would think of headshot for eleven, heading, they need to speak to him at the end of the time, somebody would question.
Okay. The, I know that we're having this energy audit with the, with train, but the air conditioners weren't all operating. And they may have, if they're operating, they're operating this week. Last week, they weren't.
Working on a lot of last couple of weeks. There's been a lot going on. But we hired outside, so it's training and our guys have worked, but if you have air system flash, if it's not somewhere running right now, if you have a portable
Then a question about, two of the things you mentioned today, the, where is the track field supposed to be going at Mullins High? Around the football field. So what does that do to the football field itself?
If anything, it might have to shift, but enough provide the six length there, but.
Okay, I'd like to discuss that in the executive session.
And Madam Chair, I think early on, we talked about the track, and we talked about the field that was open at Mullins High School. And we did have several board members that asked if we could go back and look at it being around the field. So we'll take moving the visitor aside from my understanding, back some to the track. We'll talk about it in the executive session.
And the other thing you said, is there like an operating tennis court at Marion High? No.
For a year, part of the city.
That's it for me for now.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. You received your August personnel actions in your board packet for review. We are not requesting executive session this evening for personnel actions.
No.
I mean.
Looking at our personnel actions for August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, what's the pleasure of the board? Proper by Reverend Brown. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Second by Mr. Derek Weeks. Any discussion? No discussion? We'll take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes carried and your personnel has been.
I also had a vacancy for update in your board packet for twenty-five, twenty-six. And I did just want to let you know that since last week, we have filled two positions that were on that list. The principals have done an excellent job in staffing their buildings for this year. For the couple of vacancies that we do have left, we have put some solutions, some short-term solutions in place to cover those gaps. We are working hard with staffing agencies and other support systems to, you know, fill those vacancies as quickly as possible, but we are in pretty good shape.
Any questions for Ms. Woodbury?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Wood.
The, the recruitment of educators or staff, what, how does that, what's that process like? What does this office do? I know you have like companies that do recruitment.
We also do recruitment by attending recruitment fairs at universities and colleges. We send out things through the Sarah Job Board, which is the the rural educators group and post jobs there. We've used Indeed. We use our Facebook and social media platforms as far as recruitment. So we use a lot of different avenues. We use billboards through Adams Advertising, trying to recruit teachers.
With the, those companies that we use, do they have contractual, do we have contractual obligations with them? Do we pay them? Or?
We pay a, we don't pay any fees on top of what they charge for the teacher itself. And so we do run that through finance to make sure that the numbers match what we would budget for a regular teacher salary.
I'll, 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 okay, I'll talk about that later.
Okay, Ms. Atkinson?
So with the list, I'm assuming, Dr. Bethay, we have no remote teachers as a group?
We may have.
Are you referring to Elevate?
Elevate.
Well, is that what we call remote?
Probably Elevate.
We have cut those numbers down this year. And we do have an Elevate classroom at Marion High School for Spanish. We have struggled to find a certified Spanish teacher there. And we do have one at Johnakin and one at Yonah.
I think they have three.
Okay, so those aren't reflected on this list here, correct? Do you contract with them? And then once you contract for the year, that puts them in that position?
Well, no, you can do by the semester. And sometimes you have someone that's in those classes that are in route to certification. And so the goal is for some of those individuals to get certified, which we will bring back a report next month. A lot of our instructors have now recertification. I think we've had between spring and summer.
Five or six.
Five or six that have gotten certified.
I would love to hear about, yeah.
Sure.
Thank you.
I have one question. You said that the list that you provided for us, two of them are missing. Could you tell us which ones are you don't?
Not missing. We have work to fill those.
Okay.
So kindergarten, the early childhood, and our secretary, the one listed at the bottom.
Okay. Any more questions for Ms. Woodbury? If not, thank you, Ms. Woodbury.
Madam Chair, for the next session, I would like for this reason, to give her academic update first under Department of Systems. She will need to step out right after her presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Today, I'm gonna be discussing with you our updated e-learning plan for our district. So one of our big pushes this year and a very clear directive from Dr. Bethay has been that every minute of instructional time is valued. So when we go out for e-learning, historically, we've done sort of remote packets of work and not traditional live instruction. So we're making, making a major shift this year to live e-learning instruction.
Sure.
So that creates a key lifeline for our students, which means, you know, during a natural disaster or weather-related incident, that's already an uncomfortable time for students. So having that teacher and that consistency and the visual aid of those administrators still present during your day is critical in addition to that instruction. So we have, are established and already approved by the Department of Ed, which I have to say has been very complimentary of our e-learning plan. They've already approved the plan that we submitted. Very detailed directions for both parents, teachers, and administrators. And I hate that they left already because I really wanted to commend our principals who have done a phenomenal job of taking this and already rolling it out, which I'll discuss in a moment. So to begin with, our three K and four K students will still be given instructional, visual work. However, they will have the option of a Google Meet for assistance on that visual work. And that's because it's more developmentally appropriate for a three K and four K student. So they will have work sent home with them. Our very talented principal at AEL has already worked with us to have that work ready to go. So it's printed with crayons even attached in little baggies. So the minute we have a weather incident, it is ready to hand out already. Our office worked with those three K and four K programs to develop an actually meaningful lesson for them to do that is ready to go. And they have the option of going on to a Google Meet that'll be sent out to parents that they can access on their own personal cell phone. They do not need a Chromebook to do that. The parent can log on. And also, they can do Class Dojo texting. So it protects the staff member's number and the parent's number, and they can live communicate for assistance in three K and four K. For our elementary students, again, what's very important about this age group is consistency. So you will see that we have a very detailed schedule, already shared with staff, already shared by principals, already established on the technology side. We begin with ELA instruction, live instruction. So it is a full-on ELA lesson with guided ELA practice. We do the same thing for mathematics. You'll see a lunch break, just so you know why that's in there. We have to honor teachers' unencumbered time, so we make sure that that is built even into e-learning and also give students time to have that lunch break. And then we finish with a social studies, science, and related arts assignment. So there is not a member of our instructional staff that is not actively participating in learning on e-learning day. To the side of that schedule, you'll see our attendance policy. This is taken directly from compliance with the State Department's E-Learning Department Compliance Handbook. Students have to be physically active in that Google Meet to receive a present code. We've already spoken with our attendance director, Ms. Crowner, so she's ready to go with her team already. If a student is more than five minutes late to a Google Meet, they will actually get a tardy code. This will apply all the way through middle and high school. Again, it's to encourage that active participation. And then last but not least, if the student does not attend that Google Meet, and we've already communicated this, and we will communicate it to families. it is an unexcused absence. So no more passive remote packets, we are actively learning. Now, with that said, before we go to the next grade band, please understand that we we know that some of our rural communities' power can be an issue. The policy does allow for, the state's policy does allow for some principal discretion in unique situations, but that has to be communicated by the parent or guardian. It's their responsibility to communicate HHTC lost power in Britain's net. And so we didn't have power, but that's on a case by case appeal to the principal, not a blanket excused absence. We could go to the next age group for me? Perfect, thank you. Our middle school actually follows exactly the middle school schedule. It's their same daily schedule. They have the exact amount of periods. The reason middle school is slightly different than elementary is remember, they don't all do ELA at the same time or math. It's specific to their own individual schedule. So they'll log on with their teacher, the exact same attendance policy. And then high school will be on our four block schedule. It's also designed to honor our students who are in ACT and dual enrollment. So whenever they would go to dual enrollment or the ACT, it would be the exact same teacher providing that instruction during that time. So it's adjusted for their unique schedules. You'll see again that that attendance policy is consistent. So if I'm a parent in the district and I have a child of three different grade bands, I'm not learning a different procedure. It's the same consistent attendance procedure across the grade bands with the schedules. To make this work and effective, we'll be providing Google Classroom instruction through Google Meet. Our principals have done an amazing job. Our Office of Instruction has gone to every single building, met with every single leadership team and teacher team. So all of our schools already have Google Classrooms loaded with students ready to go, with Google Meet rings ready to go, excuse me, Google Meet links ready to go. So from the moment we make a weather related decision, we can quickly pivot to e-learning under an hour and have the whole district instructionally ready to go to make that change and that turnover quickly. A tremendous respect to our technology department, Mr. Owens, who is here today. His team has done a phenomenal job of helping us update the district website. The information on e-learning is already on there, so there's no need to race and post it. It's already visible on the district website for parents, families and teachers. Our academic hub already has these schedules posted on there for all of our internal staff. And his team is diligently working to ensure we have additional chargers in case we need to quickly provide those to schools for take home devices. And then last but not least, if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide for me. We've even made it very simple on the teachers. Our department, the Office of Instruction, has actually created e-learning lesson plans. They are already on the hub. So if you're an elementary teacher, we have one for every grade with small group practice, ready to go. You're welcome to make your own, but we've actually already done it by the pacing. So those are already, we have them for middle school and high school. We also have blank versions if you would like to design your own as a staff member. And we also have a specialized plan for our exceptional ed students. It's very important that on e-learning days, they still get services that they are entitled to. So if they have a resource class, they will have live resource instruction. If they are receiving individualized services, they will have a private Google Meet to offer those services, so example, PT speech, those services. And then if they are in one of our TMD classes, we have specialized work with that live Google Meet support if the parent requires it. But we are not expecting some of our students with the most severe disabilities to stay online for ninety minutes. It's not a fair expectation based on their medical needs. So you'll see in your board packet that we have it slightly differentiated based on that academic need of the student. Any any questions that you have for us on the e-learning?
Is there a a contact if a family is having difficulty um getting online?
Yes, ma'am. So uh Ms. Owens has been very helpful in figuring out that's on the district website. We have a technology helpline that is external for the community. Um and then in addition to that, we have internal contacts, emails for staff to get assistance. Our office has also recorded walkthroughs for parents on how to use Google Classroom, how to use Google Meet. They're on our district YouTube that we linked right into the release documents. So parents can actually watch a walkthrough walkthrough video. We have the same for teachers. So anything you need help with, if if you didn't get it from the video, we have live people who can assist you during the process.
And one more question, and I'm sure this would never happen. What happens, Dr. Bethay, if a teacher doesn't show up?
We we will handle that as a personnel matter because the expectation would be it is a regular school day. Okay. And so and then in that particular case, that's when our administrators will then have to step in, will make sure all classes are covered.
So is there a way that you're able to know if somebody, if you've got, okay?
Yes, ma'am. And then in in addition to it, we have in the Google Classroom the feature to add administrators as co-teachers. So all of our administrators have already met with my office about their expectations and responsibilities. They have divided among their leadership teams being co-teachers, so they can jump in at a minute's notice and they are constantly supervising the live sessions. So we've actually already allocated a division of labor among leadership teams for the monitoring and accountability. Thank you.
Any more questions? I do have two and it might, well, three, actually. It might sound crazy, but the cameras on or off, the cameras have to stay on or off?
Um on and actually the very specific attendance says to receive a present code, you have to be actively engaged, which means cameras on.
Got you. Um uniforms, regular clothes, relaxed dress with, because you know, parents are going to call and like, I don't know, but I have those answers, but actually.
So so that's a very good question. We don't address that specifically, but but I think that's not a bad suggestion.
Think that we have a here says a dress code, but doesn't necessarily have to be your school.
Got you. And one more thing, I I know Ms. Patricia um requested this information, but what about the outside internet access? So like down in the country, I live in the country, sometimes we have a Google, it doesn't work. So what happens to those, are we still networking with like the free internet? COVID.
This is as well, we would have to make it a convention for those particular students on a case by case basis. But I will say um I am going to give request another change of going ahead and having Mr. Owens to come up because I was expecting you to ask a question about devices and going home. So we do have some procedures and something that we're going to need your help with in terms of helping to communicate.
That's on my list.
And I do want to um thank Ms. Leven. Um I think it has been, well, I know it has been a desire of the board uh for us to have live instruction. And so please know um that, you know, our first attempt, it may be some technical issues here and there, we'll continue to get better at that process. Um but we really feel that we have a very strong plan and want to thank her team for moving so quickly. And the sense of urgency, if you remember, this time last year, we had already missed five days of school because of storms. And so um because someone did comment, why are you moving so quickly? Well, we know that weather and I think even last week, there was a hurricane that was brewing as well. So thank you for the instructional team, the academic office for their work in getting this done. It's very well organized and in my opinion, very easy to follow.
Right.
And at this time, if I will have Mr. Owens to come up.
Thank you.
To talk about devices and as he's walking, um knowing that it has been a desire of the board, our older children do have devices they can take home. But we have not necessarily had our younger population. So Mr. Owens is going to talk a little bit about the process, the coverage um that we need to support devices moving on.
Yeah, good to be here, members of board. Um in your package, you should see two little flowers there. The exact same thing, it's just one's Spanish version. But what we are proposing for this year is to offer eight eight students the ability to take their devices home. So should they choose to contingent on families purchasing insurance um to cover the devices, it's an awesome theft insurance. Through a third party company, the cost, as you can see, is half the cost of the twenty five dollar tech fee that we currently charge. Um and it will cover unlimited losses or theft on the device. Um the option to add a charger coverage is there at seven dollars extra. Um but that will keep them from having to come out of pocket to replace their charger should they lose it. Um it's unlimited claims, they get a new device, the insurance automatically transfers to the new device. So it's a, it's a simple online sign up and um claim process. And if you've got any questions.
Madam Chair, I can just make a few comments. I think it was last year, I talked about the amount of damage that our students do to our devices. And we do have to have some level of accountability to families. And especially when we're having intentional damage in some cases. Most districts do have a technology fee that we, as we have had in the past, some twenty, twenty five dollars. So at this lower rate of twelve dollars, we're asking pay the insurance fee of twelve dollars and then cover the case you do have some type of breaking damage. And we think that that is reasonable. They did do their homework and trying to find what is the best deal that we can offer. And at this point, we feel that that is a reasonable deal for us to um encourage parents to move forward with that insurance.
Any questions or comments right now?
Just one question. What about the the um the situation where there is habitual loss or damage? Uh there, I mean, the insurance. You've done it one time, does that cover a second damage or?
Well, it does, it covers a second loss.
It does, okay. Is the damage considered a loss?
No, damage will be covered under the manufacturer warranty.
Okay.
We have manufacturer warranty that covers accidental damage. Um intentional intentional damage will have to address if we realize that the kid is intentionally, we will we'll address that with the in on case by case basis.
And and that's another point I want to make, we, I don't want to make a blanket statement, but if we do have just repeat um students that are doing damages, I do think at some point we may have to look at suspending your usage to that device being at school for certain periods sometime. Of course, if it's weather, we're going to have some exemption for that, just on a normal basis because actually we have to teach accountable. We can't be the only ones accountable for these devices.
I will state that charger coverage is a is a one time loss. After that, what can you be full replacement day, also the charging, so it covers you one time.
Should should some of those? Should that be on this particular piece? Should that be information that they need to know? So a one time loss for a charger, after that, you're paying full price. And what is a charger now, like eighty? Dollars, is it that much?
They're they're down a lot. I think the last one I priced right at thirty bucks.
Oh, okay. That's okay.
So better than the fifty that we're we're charging during COVID era. And we're looking at options to find some cheaper chargers.
Got you. So I do see it as one one time payment for like the whole year.
Yes.
Um but I guess the question, and do we still have technology fees for all our schools? Like when they go pay for the locker, the technology for the computers, like that twenty five dollars, I know some schools had it. Do we stop it altogether?
I think for twelve like.
Just the high schools at this time. So would that technology fee is, will that be applied as that nineteen or twelve dollars or no? Just the K to eight, okay, so.
Yeah, they shouldn't have paid it.
Having that done, will we have a grant or is there any kind of assistance for this payment? Because you have some people that have three kids, four kids, K to eight, just.
We don't internally have, um we don't internally have.
Okay.
But we'll get situations case by case.
But, yeah. Thank you, I just, just if you could um let us know about that, because you know iPhones start ringing once you say, hey, you have to pay nineteen dollars or twelve dollars and they have five kids or four kids or even one child. So if it was a way that we can help out with a grant or buy some money, possibly, I'm not sure.
We will look, I I will say in terms of um the district, I think that we really have to look at criteria. We don't want to look at situation has to be some very strong criteria if we're able to find some funding for the simple fact of determining I received it, you didn't, having some very explicit criteria.
Got you. It makes sense. Any more questions for Mr. Catherine? If not, we turn to the back to Dr. Bethay. Thank you, Mr. Catherine.
At this time, I do have in your package just a memo of our request for a program change. Just to give a little bit of background information, the Academy of Early Learning has always been deemed a program. When a location is a program and it is in your packet, um it should be on your screen as well. When you have a program, that means that your students have to be enrolled in a base school. You are only in the program on a remote basis, which I know that's a little confusing. For instance, if you're at AEL, but you're zone for Easterland, technically, you're still an Easterland student. You're just remotely in a program. Well, with our smallest population is that building continues to grow due to monicide. It's becoming more and more of a challenge, even from the from the nursing perspective, from our listservs, all calls and making sure that parents are not receiving a call from AEL and a call from AEL. There's sometimes some over lack. And so at this time, just for the smaller population, we want to always make sure that we have safe and secure protocols and practices. So the recommendation is to move that program to a designated school. That just means gives it, give that location their own number. Meaning, when you're a four year old, you will just enroll in AEL. So when you hit that threshold of being AEL, then you go back to Easterland or you go back to North Orleans or you go back to Bridge, wherever your home school. But for those first two years, you are actually enrolled at AEL. Does that make sense what I'm saying? And it just helps so, it's so much easier pulling them up in the database. When you have um substitutes right now, if you pull up, you have to remember to always hit remote students, one button. Well, one button matters a lot. And so our recommendation from the power school end, from special services end, um our lead nurse, um Nurse Scruggs, um just from overall administration, we feel that by giving that particular location, his own school identification number will be beneficial uh for the students in that building. And that just, just we would put in the request as an easy process. We put in a request and I will complain a little bit more. We put in the request, the state will review it and if it is approved. So just because we're requested it doesn't mean that it will be approved, they will review it and they deem that it does meet the criteria and then will then issue that location a number to become a school and not post. That is not only for the alternative school because those assignments are not permanent. They're there normally for forty five days, so it's constantly revolved, but it doesn't present as much of. So I'm going to ask Ms. Gordon to come up and she has any other information to share. She can also give an update on strategic planning.
One thing before she goes, I know it's down as an action, do we need to?
We do, I'm gonna see if she's gonna add it.
Um now, this would really be the next step for this program. Um as she said, this is an issue because those students go to that program and they stay all day. When we have other programs where the students go for part of the day or they go for a few days and they come back to their base school, it doesn't um challenge us as much. Um this with AEL would definitely be a positive step.
Any questions or comments? So it is down as an action item, what's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to um to uh adopt the school identification number for AEL.
Okay.
A proper motion by Ms. Bridgette White, do I have a second?
Sure.
Second by Mr. Derek Weeks.
Any discussion or no discussion, we'll take it to vote, all those papers say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes carried and we have gotten it approved for the identification of the L E L schools. I think. Thank you so much.
Ms. Gordon, at this time, will also do just an overview of where we are in terms of strategic planning.
So we have our strategic plan and school renewal plans due each year. And our our district plan and our school plan were submitted in April. We are working with two schools that need revision that will be submitted on Friday. Based on our committee work, we developed a monthly plan with action steps that are to come to be completed to make monthly progress. And we're going to review these steps each month at our district leadership, our DLT meetings. We're going to add our new staff members to our teams and subgroups will begin meeting. We're going to add our new staff members to our teams and subgroups will begin meeting in September. Um, our next meeting with external stakeholders will be in February twenty twenty-six.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? Thank you, Ms. Gordon.
At this time, I'll ask Dr. Bunch if he will come up. We are very excited that we have recently, um, been the recipient of two grants. Um, one, I think we've talked about a little bit and then another new one that will support our student services area in terms of, um, safe scores and behavior. So Dr. Bunch?
Thank you. So good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Once again, pleasure to stand in front of you and tell you this exciting news. We applied for a South Carolina aeronautics grant. This allows students to learn about the aeronautics industry to work toward their, um, uh, pilot's license, but also eventually start learning about the mechanics, uh, design, uh, anything that has to do with airports and those kinds of things. This, this program will have pieces of that. I actually have students working, uh, on simulators and working toward their license. And when they finish the program, they'll have some of the hours toward uh, their pilot's license and allows them to, when they take the pilot's license, to move more rapidly, more quickly through the program. So very excited about this. One of the, it's a rare program in the state of South Carolina. What's even more rare is we're the only district in the state that will be working with two other school districts uh, to bring students to our programs. The neighboring school districts can bring some students in and, uh, work with us. Those students districts will share with us and cost of the F T E. That's the teacher that'll be working in this program. So it's a great program for us as we, uh, build, uh, training for students in the twenty-first century here and for programs that really doesn't really, you don't really get in rural South Carolina. This is a, this is a big city, big program. We're very excited about it. The grant's for one hundred eighty-eight thousand eighty-one dollars.
Wow.
And so it's going to completely pay for, completely pay for all of these simulators that we'll need, all of the, uh, other digital things that we'll need in the classrooms, uh, and so we're very excited about that. It will be housed at A C T. And, uh, so we're looking forward to that program. Uh, looking to start this program, uh, at the beginning of the year, January. Uh, so we'll start ordering equipment, start getting things in place, hiring the teacher and those kinds of things. Start working with the other school districts and the high schools to have students get their programs ready. And those districts will actually bust their students over, just like we bust our kids to Lake City for programs. They'll actually bust in their kids into Marion County for this very impressive program. So we're very excited about this. We thank you for your support. Uh, and for the state of South Carolina for looking at our, uh, aeronautics, uh, program here and then granting us that money. So very excited about that. The second one that I will talk about is called the Stronger Connection Sub Grant Program. It's funded by the Bipartisan South Community Communities Act. It's titled Four Part A of the Elementary, Secondary, and Elementary Education. It's for every, uh, submitted by the Every Student Succeeds Act and submitted by the, administered by the South Carolina Department of Education. The purpose of this, this program is to provide students with a safer and healthier learning environment and funds for activities that are allowable through, uh, section forty-one zero eight and E S E A. Uh, we're going to use it to develop, uh, our pro, our, our schools to be safer. And as Mr. Jordan said earlier, uh, use it primarily for our new intercom systems that works with the Synthetrix, very, very expensive. And, uh, we're looking to upgrade our schools to have, uh, intercom systems that keep our schools safer. But also we're going to be working with professional development, advisory teams, family focus groups, and other strategies for, uh, to work with, um, a comprehensive, uh, program for better S E L programs for our students as well. So that's a part of it as well. So it's not only just the, the intercom system, but we're also going to develop a more comprehensive S E L program for our students and their well-being while they're here at our school. Now, we did apply for the big, the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We've not heard what we, what, how much we got, but they did say we got the grant. So I'm going to bank on the four hundred fifty, as they say. I hope, I hope that's the good news that we have. It may be less than that. But I will tell you, we're excited that, uh, South Carolina really recognizes Mayor and County on our endeavors, uh, supported by the board here and our, and our, and our superintendent to really help our students have a safer environment and to have a better learning experience while they're at other schools. So thank you for your support, uh, every time we meet. Yeah, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I do, just want to define one thing. So often as educators, we know we use Oregon in short acronyms. But the S E L is social emotional learning. So the mental, emotional health of our children. All that. It's that. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I do have a question, Dr. Bunch, if nobody else does right now. Um, what grade level would they be able to start taking a pilot's program?
I'm sorry?
The, the program for the pilot, what's, what's the grade level?
So, oh, it's, it's, it would be for tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade.
So you have to go all three years?
Yeah, you can, you can. Okay. We hope that you will. The longer you stay in the program, the more certifications you get, the more exposure you have to all the programs and also spending time on the simulator and those kinds of things. If you're looking at the pilot's licenses of those kinds of things, but it's tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade. Looking to having it fifteen students in the morning, fifteen students in the afternoon.
Awesome. And the grant, will it renew every year? We have to put in?
This is a one-time grant for, and that's why we did, with just the simulators and, and the technology in the room. So that's all we're using the grant for. We will have, the other monies will be for the F T A, but we split that three ways between the three districts. So really cost savings for us as well.
I heard you say that. I just wanted to make sure I heard you say it. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any more questions for Dr. Bunch?
Thank you.
What districts? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, the last thing that we have will be our student transfer requests. Do not have a need for executive session. I am, um, requesting that the board approve the request that you have.
Looking at the student transfer, what's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, as I moved that we set the superintendent's recommendations for the tran, student transfer request for August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
Second, I have a proper motion by Ms. Patricia Atkinson, uh, proper second by Ms. Ogeridge White.
Any discussion? No discussion. We'll take it to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Well, the student transfers have been approved. Next thing on our agenda. Dr. Batte, you're done?
Yes.
I was, sure.
We do, in your executive session packets, any other requests for information? I think we have asked for like kindergarten enrollment and things in that nature. We just run ahead and put in your thing and say, oh, but the movie package goes out.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on down. There's no public participation. Um, so we're on G. It says our, uh, committee updates are, I remember about boards. The selection of our delegates for two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six, um, you know, we can rotate them. We can keep the same. But I need to know where y'all staying with that for the delegates.
I still want to participate.
So, so y'all want to keep the same roles or?
I'm gonna say, yeah, I want to still participate though.
I, I think, you know, that we have to have two, you know, alternate that we need to make sure that everybody that's on the board that wants to sit in that role, that they get the opportunity to do that.
Most definitely.
Did we, um, vote the last time or what was that we voted?
I think y'all trying to, I, I think y'all, sorry, I think y'all actually just volunteered and everybody just said, okay. So we, I don't think we did a vote for that. So we can do a vote if y'all want to. So it could be open for everybody. We need two delegates and we need, um, one alternate. So we have enough people here tonight to make a decision, I guess.
It's not time yet. I just think it's, yes, it's time.
It's not time. No, no.
They, they sent it in November package, like the sending name. So we have a little time. So just start thinking. So we'll move on to the next one. Please start thinking about it and which role you'd like to play. Um, we're the, are they requesting that meeting for the delegation coming for the first Tuesday? Dr. Batte, the delegation, are they requesting a meeting or is that something that we requested?
I think that was a, um.
That's a board request. Okay. So are y'all okay with the first Tuesday to meet with our delegates?
Well, we needed, you know, we discussed what would be the first Tuesday. And I think, I think meeting with our, our, um, board delegations beginning of the year, um, we'll be having again, you know, looking at policies that they're going to be looking at. It's a good time of the year to have that conversation. Um, it's, we look forward to finding out what we need to promote when we meet for our, you know, delegation meeting.
Okay.
So that, it was just a consideration. It wasn't, it's no more than that.
Most definitely. Well, we, we all, as a board, we were, um, given the task of, uh, coming up with that, that second meeting date. And we, it, the responses was different, um, for the second meeting. I think that we were going to have somebody made.
Yeah. Oh, let's try, I also moved that. Oh, I want to make a motion about that, oh, me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, since we have, uh, for the second meeting, we could do like a call at, you know, at, at that ten-point time. We got something major coming up. Then we can use that as that second meeting.
So you're making a motion to, to change our, the decision of the board, not to have two meetings and just make a motion to have a call meeting if we need it. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Tell me, I tell you, where it was, is, how do I do that one? Cause, um, we were told that we had, we had everybody to, we had to figure out if the second meeting was going to be the first Tuesday of the month. Everybody was given the opportunity to say yes or no. Uh, the replies is like up and down. I, I didn't take a poll, but I did get advice from everybody that talked to me. And I had about two or three say yes. They want the first Tuesday, second Tuesday, or whatever they wanted. And I got a couple saying they don't even want the meeting at all. So I think Mr. Weeks is trying to pull it out that we don't have the second meeting. How do we?
Can I refer him to the minutes?
Yes, yes, yes.
So the minutes say that Ms. Atkinson asked the board to consider having the second board meeting on the first Tuesday of each month. As long as it aligns with the superintendent's calendar. The board will decide by noon of July twenty-first, twenty twenty fi, twenty-five, if they agree with this decision.
Right. So they agreed and the motion passed that we should have two meetings. So that's why I wanted to see what the attorney says. Mr. Week, Mr. Weeks just made a motion to take that decision off the table and reconstruct it. That's why I'm getting direction of what we need to do with that. So I'm not knocking it because we did make the decision and we're supposed to have a date to have that second meeting. But you have, again, a few people that want the second meeting and a few people that don't. So if a motion comes again on the table, just correct me. I need your help. If the motion is passed that we have to make that meeting date, we have to do that. But I think he wanted to make a motion not to have it. So that's why I'm referring to Attorney Weeks.
It sounds like he's looking to modify your, your prior action to say that instead of having it scheduled, that you would leave it available in case you need a special call.
That part.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So what, what would he have to say? He needs to modify, uh, what we had going down in July. Cause that's when we decided to have two meetings. Cause that, that is my goal to have two meetings. If we gotta have it, we gonna set it. I think it was supposed to be the first Tuesday of each month.
Right.
That's where we're at. But where you got everybody's input, some people changed. Uh, that's all I can say is some people changed. So if he's making a motion, what do he need to do to make?
Setting, modifying towards prior action. Instead of having a regular scheduled meeting, second meeting, you would leave that, that date available in case there's a need for a special call.
So what we'll do is we'll take that motion, then we need a second. And then we can always vote it down or vote with it. So that's where we're gonna go. Mr. Weeks, can you say that again?
So, uh, I'll make a motion that, uh, we modify the second meeting for our board to special call meeting if we need it.
Okay. Do we have a second? We have a second. We have a proper motion to modify our second meetings for the board. Um, and we have a proper sec, motion by Mr. Derrick Weeks, a proper second by Reverend Brown. Do we have any discussion? Well, no discussion. We'll take it to a vote. All those favor, say aye. Can I do it with the show of hands? All those in favor, say aye or show of hands. All those opposed say nay or show hands.
I'm saying.
I'm saying. All right. So right now we have three ayes, the council, the second meeting, one day, the council, the second meeting, and one abstain. So the ayes carried and the second meeting has been removed. And that's what I need to do, right?
Attorney, um, Williams. What, what is the, um, what does the agenda say? What's the agenda read about this, um, action that we're taking now? Is it on the agenda?
It, it, you know what, Ms. Ogeridge, it is not as an action on the agenda.
I think it's improper.
That is very.
And I will say this though, I, I'm.
It's very improper.
We're sick of the conversation. I don't know if anybody else is sick of it. If we don't want, let's don't do it. But to bring it up every, I mean, it just makes us look indecisive.
It does.
And I haven't talked about it myself in almost a year. I don't know, I don't even think anybody even recognized I hadn't brought it back up after the first time. But for us to keep bringing this thing up, it comes across as if it's something we don't want to do. And, um, I think there was a good reason for wanting to do it, but bringing it up every month, I'm just not, I'm not with it. But I, but we need to not try to, um, do something that comes across as if we're trying to, uh, I'm trying to use the right word.
Please use it. Please use the right words. But we, I hear what you're saying.
But you know what I'm trying to not say.
Right.
Because it's not on the agenda.
You're, you're right. Absolutely.
Mr. Weeks, it wasn't on the agenda and for us to bring it up and, and, and appears as if people knew it was coming up, but it's not on the agenda.
I get it. I'm so, I'm back. Come on.
Response.
Please do.
When this was brought up initially, I was in favor of what Mr. Weeks said.
She, yes.
I was the one, I'm the one to push back on all of y'all. I didn't want it. I said, no, let's just do a call meeting. But it kept getting pushed that we wanted it, we wanted it, we wanted it. And then I thought, well, if we want it, then let's come up with a, an agenda. So that's the reason I brought it forth because there was a majority that said they wanted it. I did not. And then today, we flipped again and I, this for me is an issue.
It should be issue.
Once we decide on something, we should commit to it. And whether you like it or not, and I, and I committed to it. I didn't like it. I didn't want it. Uh, but here we are again. We've flipped again. And I agree with, uh, Ms. White that we, we need to show some sense of, um.
Sticking with something that we.
I would call that integrity.
Right.
When it comes to making decisions.
So I need to make sure that you and Ms. White know and everybody else around the table know that I only sit here and I was told that that was going to maybe happen. So I, I wanted following the instructions. However, if y'all remember a couple meetings ago when we were talking about it, I said, hey, wow, we keep bringing it up and we're not gonna do it. We need to leave it alone. That's when we made a decision to have the, uh, ideal for July the first, two thousand twenty-five. However, I voted tonight. So that way you could see my head. I don't need to meet. I don't want to meet. But if y'all want it, I'm with it. Majority.
It has nothing to do with that.
Right.
Me, at this point, like I said, I haven't mentioned it in.
Right. So I'm.
You know, because the purpose of the meeting was to provide us opportunity with meeting about this.
Only.
Only. That was it. That, that to me is a, um, very, uh, it's a commitment to this, this organization.
It is.
And it was a sacrifice to this organization. And, um, but as, as y'all all know, if I, if something doesn't have a good feeling, whatever, I'm good. Because you know, winning and losing, it doesn't do anything for me. This was, it was not about winning and losing from the beginning.
Right.
It was about the fact that, uh, having us stick to something.
And do it.
And getting it done. And it was requiring because we weren't making evaluations on time. There was reasons behind.
Yes, sir.
You know, our, um, we were not getting our audits done on time. You know, so it wasn't like it was just, you know, hey, I want to come in and eat chicken fingers with, um, Sal.
That part.
It was not. You know, it was about the business of this organization. So having said that, I mean, we can talk and meet about it in next month and then decide what, whatever. But I tell you what, we don't need to do this every month as if, cause it makes us look like we're not, you know.
So having that been said, and respectfully, we're going to stick because it's not on the agenda. We're going to stick to the, the July decision that we had. The, the meet date was supposed to be, uh, set. And I have to go with the majority. It's, it's gotta be that first Tuesday with the time. They have not given me the time. We would have to get the time when everybody gets time. But so right now, give me one second, Reverend Brown. Right now, we will not, uh, we need to withdraw. Do I withdraw that motion? How do we?
I will say that now, I, what I do want to do, I do want to add on to the agenda um, about how we, how we're conducting the, um, agenda meeting.
Okay.
Because if this came up in an agenda meeting or wherever it came up. Okay, now we, we need, we, we, this, this is concerning to me and, and I'm doing. This is, I promise you, the last time I'm gonna say anything, whatever y'all want to do, that's fine. Cause Oga ain't gonna make no motion and she ain't gonna say. So what I'm saying is, let's just go ahead and do whatever. I don't know how, how the attorney directs us, but I am, I'm.
Well, Ms. Ogeridge, I just want to make sure of real estate. Mr. Weeks had the questions. I think he called to get the response. I just wanna make sure of real estate, Mr. Weeks had the questions, I think he called to get the responses to figure out what he can do. And I think that's what he did tonight, but I mean, I, I can't knock him for trying.
Flowed out of discussion about the, the first Tuesday board meeting with legislative delegation, so that's where it started.
Yeah, so we. So we, we will not talk about that, the first Tuesday is a consideration to meet with our delegations, and that's what we're tending to having that date. When everybody was told to give me a response, some of the responses was negative, we don't want the meeting. So I think that, that's where Mister Weeks is coming from, so I, I do apologize, I will stand corrected. I had no idea how it was gonna go with everybody doing the response by themselves. But we will have to make that a part of our agenda meeting and make it an action for the next time, so that way we can stick with it, Reverend Brown, you have something to say?
Yes. And response to the statement was not on our agenda. We've deviated from the agenda many times, and we put that on the tape.
Yes ma'am.
Alright, you asked the attorney what should be done, he gave us an answer. And then we took the vote. Now, in our co- 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 uh, board policies, there's always been a policy. That if you needed to call a second meeting, a special meeting, we could. We don't need to meet twice a month, and there's no real purpose. If you, the chair, called a special meeting, because it's something that has to be voted on, that's your authority. And so he just gave us an answer. Uh, we had, uh, a vote put on the table, we just voted. Not to have meetings twice a month. We are stepping over board policies that have been preset. And there is a procedure you go through to change board policy. So we had a policy in place, really, there was no need for the vote to begin with. So I'm gonna ask the attorney, is what we just done. In accordance to Robert rules of honor, even though it was not on the agenda, but yet we just voted. And the majority present said. We do not need to meet twice a month, but only when there's a special call meeting. Now then we just do something wrong, even though it was not on the agenda. This board has deviated from the agenda many times.
I, I understand that, I wouldn't advise you to do that as, as a practice, um, and so I, I would say. The cleanest thing is to not take the action, particularly if it's anything controversial, if it was not on the agenda. If everybody was in agreement, I think it would be less of an issue, but there, there clears to be, there appears to be some clear disagreement about that, so if, if there's anything that's gonna cause some. Disagreement and concerns about not being properly noticed, then I would not wanna, want you to go forward with that action.
Okay, so we should.
Again, with the, the understanding is, as you've said. Whether you have a second meeting or not, anytime either the chair or majority of the board feel like there's a need for a special call meeting. That's something that can be done, and that's something that's frequently done across the state.
So are you saying we need to put it back on, put it on the agenda one more time, what are you saying?
It depends what the pleasure of the board is, but I, I would say if you're looking to take some action to change the earlier action, you would need to clearly notice it on a, on an agenda for an upcoming board meeting.
Okay.
So we gonna, before I started this conversation, I looked over there to our attorney and say, what do I do? So I'm gonna say again, how do we correct that, because I wanna make sure, you know, we're doing everything we're supposed to do. So to correct that, we, we moved that, moved that, how do you say it, Miss Patricia, is to take that action and move it off?
Just make a motion to rescind the prior action regarding the changing of the meeting.
Can't make the motion, can't somebody make?
I can't, cause I said no.
But you can.
To just say you're making a motion to rescind the prior action of changing the meeting date.
Um, Melchior, make a motion to rescind the, uh, prior action that was, um, about to meet second.
Yes sir, do I have a second?
I can second.
I have second, do we have any discussion? With no discussions, we'll take it to a vote, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Ice carrot, we rescinded it.
Upstayed.
And one upstayed.
One nay.
And one nay. The ice carrot, that motion has been removed. I do apologize for the inconvenience and not being on the, um, agenda. I did look over to our attorney at that time and I, I just went on with it, I do apologize to the, the public and our. Everybody's watching this, um, that we do make mistakes, but we are a board that we stick together, we talk. And if we can help each other, we're gonna help each other, and I appreciate it, cause if y'all notice, I keep on looking at everybody like what I do. So it's called learning curves, and we're in the educational system to learn. Um, where you can find out that you can make a mistake and correct yourself when you make the mistake, that shows growth. So I appreciate everybody for taking out that time with that, we're gonna move on to the next, um, item on our agenda. So the consideration for the first meeting that we will have as of right now. Um, it would be the first Tuesday of the month, which that date is not on our agenda. But we are gonna have to add it, because the first Tuesday is gonna be the first meeting we had, I believe, cause it should have started. September the second, I'm looking at calendar, so that would be September the second, the day after Labor Day. So that first meeting would be, uh, September the second. The only thing that we did not come up with was the time, so is five thirty gonna be okay, like?
I think that's what they said.
So it's gonna be, um, so we would have to add to this agenda.
Find out if the delegation can meet with us.
That's the part.
See, that might not, it might be that they can't.
Okay, can you get with? Let me find out. Doctor Bate or Miss De Sierra? If that's the case, we still would have a scheduled meeting for the first Tuesday.
Chair, I think I need more direction, they're probably gonna wanna know the purpose, the objective of the meeting, so.
We'll get that to you, Doctor Bate, because we will still have a scheduled meeting for September the second, if we was gonna start our first Tuesday meetings anyway. So that would also propose a problem with our carrot agenda meeting day that we just made first Tuesday at eleven. Um, that'd be for the second meeting, and we will need another agenda meeting for the first Tuesdays. But as of right now, we have two meetings, I wanna make sure that's clear, that we were coming up today and having to know that it was gonna start. September the fir- second would be the first meeting for our only business, I think that is only business meeting. And the second, the third Tuesday is the regular one, student recognition, rewards and everything, so that's where we're at.
And so Madam Chair, I do think that, um, some clarity will, will be established. If we get some of that in writing.
Yes ma'am.
Know what the first meeting is, what the second meeting is, and also in writing exactly the dialogue that we wanna have with the board and like to have with delegation.
Okay, so let me, uh, Attorney Williams, a question for you, is that something that we could talk about for, uh, what is it, what's the reason we can go on executive? I'm sorry. Contractor, not contractor. Legal, legal briefing, because we just make a motion, we took it back, cause it could have been not legal. How can we go in, back to talk about what she needs to do for those first two meetings? Cause she's gonna, so we have, you doing out here. Alright.
I said, one of the things you have on your gen- on your agenda, says agenda items you have for next month.
Okay.
So that come out as part of that discussion, right?
That could come out there, I just wanna follow the agenda. Okay, so we'll go on and we'll get you some more information, give me a couple of seconds, Doctor Bate. Uh, the next thing that we have, we do have regular schedule board meeting for September the second and September the sixteenth. Both at five thirty, we do have an upcoming school law conference that will be this week, this disclosed location. Uh, we will have our regional advocate meeting, uh, that date will be provided, I see it's not there. And for the next agenda items, only because we have to be a little bit more specific, and there's nowhere to talk about it, um. We need to kinda like be a little bit more specific for the first meeting, um, September the second, any discussion on that?
Yeah.
Yes ma'am. It is. It is Labor Day, would that make a difference?
Well, I mean, we can make a motion to not meet on the September second, correct?
No, you had, yeah, you had on your agenda first Tuesday board meeting, so if you're not, now, you don't believe a majority of the board may be available, that is something that would be proper for you to make that motion.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we, um, do not meet on September second. Okay, are we gonna schedule after? Second, I have a motion by Miss Ogerita White, not to meet on September the second, do I have, I have the second by Reverend Brown, any discussion? One discussion, um, do we have to redo another date for, well, right now and do it later?
It's a, that's up to the board, I mean, you don't have to.
The day to be later discussed if we're gonna have it. Any, any more discussion, no discussion, we'll take it to a vote, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay, the ice carrot is no September the second meeting. Thank you. Okay, so we wanna go now into executive session, we have two things that, that I did write down, it would be contractual. And the track field and Mullins, how, what, what is that under? That's contractual too, so both is contractual, no personnel, no legal briefing, um.
There will be a legal.
It will, there is a legal briefing, okay, wrote down now. Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to go into executive session.
Thank you, any seconds? I got a second about Mister Weeks, any discussion? With no discussion, we'll take it to a vote, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay, the ice carrot executive session. The ayes carried executive session. Thank you.
Okay, we'll get you out. Get him.
Okay. So we are going.
Awesome.
Yeah, we're gonna make for us.
No, what?
Yeah, you know.
Okay.
I'll be.
We have.
They got mine. They got mine.
Go.
All right, so we're gonna go into.
Thank you.
We are coming from executive session. What's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to come out of executive session into open session.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
Do I have any discussion? Or no discussion? We'll take it to a vote. All those that they say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The ayes carried. We are out of executive session. Um, I will go ahead and say that we took no action in the executive session. Uh, we only went out for contract or matters. That's it. And that's it. Um. What's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, I move that the grievance hearing for employee A be scheduled for September sixteenth and that a letter be sent to employee regarding scheduling of the hearing and providing the format of the hearing.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Sure.
I have a pop on most of them. It's all over the white. They had the special hearing, well, not special hearing, but a hearing for an employee. And I have a proper second by me sitting there. Weeks, any discussion? Or no discussion? We'll take it to a vote. All those papers say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The ayes carried. We will have that meeting. Um, just a few reminders. We did say something about the, the regional advocacy meeting. It is actually October twenty first. It is in Florence, South Carolina. October the first. I'm sorry. I heard twenty first.
I tried to correct.
I told the first. So if you'd be so kind to make a correction and add it to the agenda notes. Um, but it will be in Florence. Um, other than that, uh, what is the? I do want y'all to be saying we do have schedules.
But football is that football?
Yeah, that's what about each school. So I mean, please don't support our students if you can. I think they would love to see it. What's the pleasure of the board?
Uh, snap chat. Oh, first, oh, let's see. Oh, on the first home game with Muggs. Make sure y'all please come out there. I will be in town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weeks for that announcement. Um, we, we appreciate, uh, you saying that, Mr. Weeks. What is the other pleasure of the board?
Oh, Madam Chair, some move that we adjourn.
Okay, do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right. I have question. Do we have employee B?
Support staff.
Oh, yes, it supports staff. What's the pleasure of the board on that? Nobody took that one, so.
That, um, that we, um, that we don't take any action from the board's stand.
So that's a motion to not take any action of employee B from.
And on the board.
On the board's standpoint.
Yeah.
Um, any, do I have a second?
Madam Chair, I say second.
Okay, so we have the proper motion by Ms. Over the way. Proper second by Ms. Patricia Axon. Any discussion? With no discussion, we'll take it to the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Aye.
We have one abstained. Everybody said of the ayes, the ayes carried. It has been approved. Okay. If no other business for the night, what's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, I so, I'll move to adjourn this meeting.
Okay, what's the second?
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion, we'll take it to all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The ayes carried and we are adjourned.